Okay, thank you for joining us. Apologize for a minute or so late, we're just coming out of some opening sessions up in our conference room. But I'd like to welcome you, all those that are here and all those that are online or on TV, to our first regular meeting in May. And I would ask our City Clerk, City Clerk Sylvia von der Linden, for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Borgans.
Here.
Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Mazur.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bain.
Here.
Mayor Seibert.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise and join me in honoring our flag and our country at the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we've got a couple, whoa, that's loud, a couple special orders of the day. Our first one is a proclamation recognizing May 2017 as National Historic Preservation Month. I'm going to ask Jim Gurnon from our, the Chair of the Historic Resource Advisory Committee, yeah, I saw Jim here, as along with Barbara Pierce, former Mayor Barbara Pierce, and De Eva, who are the co-chair of the Sesquicentennial. It should be no big surprise that history is a big deal in Redwood City right now. If you didn't have, oh, they're bringing books, so I'm not going to talk about it. I'm not going to steal their proud, but come on up. It is fabulous that we share such a rich history in Redwood City, and it's great that this year we get to celebrate our 150th anniversary. And we do, first, before I give you the microphone, we do have an honor of National Historic, or National Preservation Month. We have a proclamation signed by the City Council, and I'll read the bottom. Now therefore, I, John Seibert, Mayor of Redwood City, do proclaim May 2017 as the National Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Redwood City to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Now you ask, how can I, as a, someone hearing this, participate and recognize this special observance? Well, we're about to tell you that. So, but first, I want to present this to you, congratulations, on behalf of the city and the City Council.
Thank you. So, as the mayor said, I'll tell you a few of the things that are going on this month here in Redwood City for Preservation Month, year 2017. In addition to being observed by the proclamation this evening, a Union Cemetery Historic Site Tour was conducted on Saturday, May 6th, so that's already happened, but it was an oppor, but there were a couple other opportunities. There will be a downtown historic walking tour on Saturday, May 27th, at 10:30, gathering in front of the Lathrip House. And there also are going to be a series of field trips for Redwood City 7th graders to three of the downtown historic buildings that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. This year is actually going to be the largest group, it's over 860 students that will participate in that. And in addition, because this is the year we're celebrating our 150th anniversary, there are some other things going on that Barbara and Dee would like to talk about.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. We have a real exciting rest of the year planned, some of our events have already taken place, but our calendar for this Sunday, May, Saturday, May 20th, I have some flyers, and you'll find them on the back table when you leave, but we have the Festival of Flower Extravaganza that we've been planning for a long time now. It's going to feature a chicken wing competition, we have, I think, 13 entrants in that for a chicken wing cook-off. We're going to have at 9 o'clock, the, or 8:30, I guess, the 150th light show, laser light show on the Fox, from the Fox Theater onto the courthouse. We have music, top shelf classics, Sinister Dexter, Mustang Har, Mustache Harbor, the Big Wave Band, we've got 10 bands, including the West Bay Community Band, who will be playing the first time probably since the 1920s, the song "Redwood City," that has been set up for a 60-piece band and two vocalists. We're also going to have, for family events, an 1850s Pioneer Camp, that is going to feature a covered wagon, inflatable playland, and Kids Love Truck Zone, rock climbing wall, crafts inside the museum, ethnic food, a car show, a flower exhibit, historic fashion show. There are two fashion shows, one at 1:00 and one at 2:30, inside the museum, and it's going to feature 150 years of fashion. And then we have an Art on the Square, as well as the Art and Flower Show, that's going to be taking place inside the Fox Theater, and that's where artists created flowers, flower arrangements to go with pieces of art that are going to be on display. So there's a lot going on in May. As we get into June, we have a speaker series, a second of our speaker series, our Fascinating Court History, Personalities, and Cases, and we have some very impressive speakers on that, so I think you will really enjoy it, and that will be in Courtroom A at the museum on June 10th at 1:00 p.m. We're also going to have a historic documentary film, and that will be on the history of Redwood City, and the premiere on that will be December 3rd. We're going to have five fun in the park events put on by the Park and Rec Department, and 150th themed 4th of July Parade, and much more. If you have any, want any more information, you can go to our website, rwc150.org, and it's all there. Barbara?
We just wanted to do a quick thank you. We're handing out tonight, and you should see these, all around Redwood City. If you don't see them, go to the website and ask us for them. This is 140 pages, stories about Redwood City history, photographs, many that have never been seen. It is free because of the support of the sponsors and the people who've been buying these silly little pins, and we are still accepting donations, funny thing about that. And they are everywhere, and so please help us to find homes for the 40,000 of them. So do your best work. I'd like to thank some of the people who've really been helping us all through this year. The council members who've served on our committee, Diane, Ian, Janet, the staff members who have really pulled out all the stops, Chris, Derek, and their staff have been working very hard, all the departments who have been working with us to provide the support for the events and working with us to resolve some of the issues that always manage to pop up. And the people, Janet McGovern and Jim Kirkland, who put this together, it has been in process for at least the last six months. And just the countless people who have put in their time, Roe Fisher and Jackie Featheroff, who are curating local artists' work, and then pairing it, Ali Ice has been bringing in floral designers who are actually going to do the work to mirror and set off the art pieces. So this is something, we tried to have something for everyone. I don't know if Dee mentioned the adult libations tasting area and the chicken wing contest. So, if you are a child, there are trucks and helicopters to check out and sit on. If you are an adult and you like chicken wings, come on down. If you are an art lover, come on down. If you like to taste tequila, wine, or beer, we have that as well. So there is truly something for everyone on May 20th, noon to 9:00. Be there or be square. Thank you.
Thank you again, congratulations. Thank you for all the hard work. It has really been an amazing year, the 150th, and really amazing things are coming just a few weeks from now, so.
Mayor Seibert.
If you don't have that on the calendar, yes.
Before we move on to the next item and our guests leave the room here, I just want to thank especially Dee and Barbara for the incredible energy around this 150th anniversary. We've had, already had a series of events, just, I believe it was last week, we had a Council of Cities meeting where we had people from other cities come and listen to the story about Simon Mezzi's, which is a fascinating story, by the way. And I had a chance to pick up the book over the weekend, it is beautiful, it far exceeded my expectations, so keep up the great work, we are very, very grateful for what you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, this next item, I'm gonna, oh, sorry. Excuse me.
Mayor Seibert, before Barbara and Dee leave, I just also wanted to thank them and throw in a plug that the week before, on the 13th, City Trees is working with the Pride and Beautification Committee, and what we're going to do on the 13th is we're going to Public Works at 8:30 in the morning, get some breakfast and some tools, and go out in the community, and we are going to clean it up and spiff it up and make Redwood City shine for our event on the 19th and the 20th, and City Trees will be there at the end of the morning, handing out a sapling to every volunteer who comes that day. So please come, it's on our website, it'll start 8:30 at the Public Works yard until noon when we have our barbecue, and I believe former Mayor Pierce will be there also. If you'd like to join us and do some really good work for Redwood City and make it beautiful for our upcoming events, please join us on the 13th. Thank you.
Okay. Well, before, I'm going to call an audible here real quick, we have some celebrities with us today, and the council doesn't always do this, but to honor this group of celebrities today, I'm going to ask my colleagues to come out front and stand in front of their name tag, I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Bain to join me at the, at the thing, but if you, if you guys would stand there, and I'm going to, I'm going to talk a little bit about it, and then as people are called up, I hope that they will come along and be congratulated by the receiving line for the celebrities that we have with us, so if you guys will all come out, stand in front of your name tag, that should be reasonably easy. You can switch if you'd like to be somebody else. Okay, so if, as, I'm going to, as people are called up, first I'm going to invite up Andy Fritsch, the Executive Director of Kinos, and I'm going to have him come up and introduce the celebrities that are here with us. But what, what we have here is Andy, Andy Fritsch is the Executive Director of Kinos, and we had some residents of Kinos and some volunteers, but, but the residents of the celebrities here go to the 2017 Special Olympic Games in Graz, Austria, and they didn't just go and represent Redwood City, which would have been enough, that would have been fine. Go, represent us, have a good time. They went and they brought home, not the bronze, not the silver, but the, there we go, but the gold medal. So, with that, I'm going to ask Andy Fritsch to introduce our special guests and celebrities, and if you will, as they come up, if you'll come along and be congratulated, Andy, and then if you'll say a little bit, and then, and then we'll have a congratulate time.
Thanks very much, Mayor Seibert. We had the opportunity to participate in the International Special Olympics Winter Games, happens every four years, and we participated in a group dance competition. Dance is not currently a sport in the Special Olympics, it was invited as an exhibition sport to see if they want to have it as a sport. And I think after our performance, which you can see, gosh, on Facebook, possibly on the city's website, on the kinosusa.org website, really was spectacular, there's no doubt in my mind that it will ultimately become a sport. But we were so proud to represent our city and our country in Austria, and we were so, we were proud to represent it, and I think we did, did the city proud. Want to recognize, in the back, our cheerleading section, who was in Graz with us, three board members, and a parent and a board member, Shirley Carlson, Barbara Robins, our Board President, and Paula Uchelli, were there cheering on the team. I was the official coat holder that got to hold the coats when the clients, because it was pretty cold out there, so they were all bundled up before they did their performance, and boom, I was holding the coat. But our, our team was an integrated team, because Kinos is about community integration, and there were 11 people total, and we have seven of them here today. And we have Todd Ostrom, come on up, Todd. Julie, no, 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 shake the hands of the City Council, and then come up to the mayor, please. Julie Flahaven, Elissa Cummings, Eric Tumida, Jennifer James, Paula Riddell, and Shay Acosta. So, Todd, can you come on up and accept a proclamation or a surprise from, from the mayor? And just truly, it was hard to describe how proud we were to be able to represent our community in the International Special Olympics. Come on up, guys. Come on up, board.
Come on over, we'll get, we'll get you all over here. We have a proclamation for you to hang on the wall, perhaps in your dance studio, or if you don't have a dance studio, we'll try and get you a dance studio. Clearly you deserve a dance studio if you have a gold medal. But on behalf of the city of Redwood City, I'm going to put my glasses on so I can read the bottom of it, there we go. It is resolved that I, John D. Seibert, Mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of the people of Redwood City, hereby congratulate Team La Blast San Francisco Kinos for its passion and enthusiasm in making positive changes and inspiring those around them and around the world. Thank you very much for representing our city so well, congratulations.
I'd like to say, thank you for your time, and I love, I love Louie, and Louie, Louis, when he's there, I'm going to say, because I love Louis so much, because he comes down to me and say, Louis, I, I wish you would come here with me for Special Olympic, for everybody, Special Olympics!
Thank you. The mayor asked me to come up and say a few words to you guys, because he knows that I used to work at Kinos. My, for those of you who don't know, my first full-time job out of college was working here at Kinos, and some of you I've known for 28 years, Paula Riddell, and Todd Ostrom in particular, and some people I've gotten to know more recently, I just want to say, I am so proud of you guys. True story, my wife and I were in Italy on vacation, and halfway through our, our vacation, we said, "Shh." And halfway through our vacation, we said, should we just pop up to Austria and watch these guys perform and surprise them? I'm sorry we didn't get to see you perform live, but we saw the video and it was amazing. And I really does, I really do hope this becomes a sport in the Special Olympics, because I know you guys will, will get it every year. So thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, let's all, let's all come out front and get a picture with the whole council. That'd be great. Moving on in the agenda, we are on to public comment. I do not have any speakers cards.
Swearing in.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, we do have a swearing in. Sorry about that. Sylvia will be swearing at me if I don't do the swearing in. That's a joke. So we have a swearing in of appointed boards, commission, committee members. I would invite our city clerk Sylvia Vonderlinen up to conduct the oath for, I believe Kate Heister is here. Housing and Human, is it? Heister. Housing and Human Concerns Committee. And is Chu Chang here? Oh, there he is. Sorry, I didn't see you. For the Board of Building Review. So if you'll come up and conduct the oath, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor Seibert. If I could please ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Kate Heister.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Kate. Congratulations, too.
Thank you for stepping up and for serving. I've congratulated each of you already, but thank you again. You both went through a lengthy application, interview, and writing, answering questions, and other thing. And they were great applicants. We had an amazing group of applicants this year for our various boards, commissions, committees, as we do for appointments that we have coming up in the near future. So thank you for stepping up. It's a lot of work. If you didn't know what you're getting into, you might rethink some of that oath. It's a lot of work, but we appreciate it. It's great work. It really, some of the unsung heroes of this community and the work that gets done are on our boards, commissions, and committees. So thank you. So with that, we are to public comment, which again, I have no speakers cards. And seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. And I believe on consent, we will at first take all of the items, I would entertain a motion on all the items except 6.1A.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Second.
The motion is second on all items with the exception of 6.1A. Electronic vote, please.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Howard, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Seibert. On item 6, 1.0A, it's an agreement with David Powers and Associates regarding the environmental impact report between the city, involving the city and the YMCA and the future of the facilities that would be built there. And I am a board member of the YMCA, so I'm going to abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Move item 6.1A.
Second.
The motion is second on 6.1A. Please vote electronically.
Motion carries with Councilmember Howard abstaining. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we approve the consent calendar, which included the item, was just discussed, continuing to move forward with the Veterans Memorial Senior Center YMCA Joint Project. We approved a water contract for sanitary sewer and water main replacements, license agreement allowing privately funded construction and maintenance of a public pedestrian walkway on a portion of Redwood Creek, approval of the draft meeting minutes for the closed session, interview session, and regular meeting of April 24th, final acceptance of recycled water project, main city distribution system phase 2A, and approved claims and checks dated May 8th and the usual and necessary payments through May 22nd. That, we move on to item 7A, which is the appointment to the Senior Affairs Commission and the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. I spoke just a minute ago. I, just before we vote, I want to comment that the caliber of applicants we've had, and not just for the Board of Building Review and the Housing and Human Concerns Committee, but this for the Senior Affairs Commission and the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, it's too bad that we can't find places for all of you. There are places for all of you to serve in the city, just not all, not room for all of you on all the boards, commissions, committees. But I just want to appreciate and show my appreciation for all those that not only step up and are appointed, but those that, that stepped up and applied and keep trying. Many of us served on boards, commissions, committees. I was, it wasn't until my third try that I was first appointed. So I continue to do that. With that, I will turn this over to our city clerk Sylvia Vonderlinen, who will conduct the voting via the sheets that the council members should have.
And Mayor Seibert, since I wasn't here for the interviews of either of these positions, I was, I was out of town for work, I'm not, I'm gonna recuse myself from voting on this.
Okay.
So as the mayor said, you are appointing tonight to the Senior Affairs Commission for one seat. On your red folders, you have tally sheets. And then for the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, I'll ask you for two names for two seats when council augmented and expanded the Complete Streets Advisory Pilot Committee. We're gonna start with the Senior Affairs Committee. Councilmember Aguirre, vote for one, please.
Carrie Mitchell.
You. Councilmember Borgans.
Ruth Louise Rogers Silverman.
Councilmember G.
Mitchell.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
Carrie Mitchell.
Councilmember Bane, Mazur is abstaining. Correct. Thank you. Vice Mayor Bain.
Carrie Mitchell.
Thank you. Mayor Seibert.
Carrie Mitchell.
And the appointee to the Senior Affairs Commission is Ms. Carrie Mitchell. I will ask you now to move on to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, and I'll ask you for two names. We're gonna start with Councilmember Borgans.
And Spencer Sprinkle.
Thank you. Councilmember G.
Galasides Rosa.
Councilmember Howard.
Elon Scheinman. And Spencer Sprinkle.
Thank you. Councilmember Mazur will be abstaining. Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre.
And Bob Gutierrez.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bain.
Elon Scheinman. And Spencer Sprinkle.
Thank you. Mayor Seibert.
Galasides and Rosa.
It looks like you have one appointee to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee that has four votes, and that will be Jason Galasides. So I'm gonna ask you to vote again for the second seat. Thank you. Councilmember G, vote for one only.
Rosa.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
Elon Scheinman.
Councilmember Mazur abstaining. Councilmember Aguirre.
Rosa.
Councilmember Borgans.
Sprinkle.
Vice Mayor Bain.
Elon Scheinman.
Thank you. Mayor Seibert.
Rosa.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for a vote again, for your vote again. I do not have anyone that has four votes. Councilmember Howard, vote for one, please.
Elon Scheinman.
Councilmember Mazur is abstaining. Correct. Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre.
Jade Rosa.
Jay Rosa.
Councilmember G.
Rosa.
Vice Mayor Bain.
Scheinman.
Mayor Seibert.
Jade Rosa.
Thank you. And your second appointee to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee is Jade Rosa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go onto item 8A. This is the consideration of the final environmental impact report for the California Way Water Tank Pump Station and Pipeline Project. There she is. I believe Lisa Acosta Sanders, principal planner with the city, will present the staff report.
Evening, council members. Purpose of the meeting this evening is to receive public comments and then act on the certification of the final environmental impact report for the California Water Tank. Also select the project. Briefly, the background for the project. The city's water master plan recommends a new water storage tank in the California Zone. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared in 2013. And based on public comments that were received through the circulation of that document, staff decided to prepare an environmental impact report to evaluate alternative designs that would lessen the visual prominence of the new tank. This EIR was released in July of 2016 for a 45-day public review period. The Planning Commission and the Utilities Committee both held public meetings to receive input and review the draft EIR. After issuance of the final environmental impact report, which included a response to comments, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the city council certify the final EIR. The Utility Committee also reviewed the alternatives and the information presented, and the Utilities Committee recommends that the council select the hillside alternative. Just to orient you very briefly on the location, the area outlined in red is the city-owned parcel, and it's located at the corner of California Way and Tum Sudan Way. The area you see slightly shaded is within city limits, and the area surrounding it is single-family residential uses within the county of Samatelle jurisdiction. The purpose of the new water tank is to increase water storage capacity for emergency, domestic use, as well as firefighting capabilities. The project is the construction of a new 750,000-gallon water storage tank with a new pump station, generator, associated retaining walls, landscape improvements, as well as transmission pipelines. The site for the new water tank does have a level area near California Way, and the rest of the slight site does slope towards the west with mature vegetation. The site does have high groundwater, is rocky, and contains naturally occurring asbestos in the soil. The proposed site plan presented before you places the tank approximately 50 feet from the California Way edge of pavement. There's proposed landscape screening between the tank and California Way. The new tank would be 23 feet tall, would be painted an earth-toned color to blend with the site. The project also includes new retaining walls, a pump station building, new service driveway around the tank that would be accessed from Tum Sudan Way. This is the visual simulation of the proposed tank location. The top view is the existing, as you would view it from California Way. The middle shows the tank with the initial tree planting. And then the bottom shows the view after 10 years of growth with the landscaping. The hillside alternative site plan, this places the tank farther into the hillside away from California Way. It does require more grading and taller retaining walls, but it reduces the visual prominence of the tank more than the proposed project or any of the other alternatives considered. And then this is the view of the hillside alternative, so the top would be the existing condition. The middle is just upon completion with the initial tree planting, and then the lower view would be after 10 years. And this is the same view I showed you earlier from California Way. Compare the two sighting locations. The solid green circle is the proposed tank, again, 50 feet from the edge of pavement at California Way. And then the red outlined circle is the hillside location. It's approximately 135 feet from the edge of pavement at California Way and approximately 55 feet from the property line at Tum Sudan Way. Your council is very familiar with the SEQA process. It's to inform decision-makers in the public on potential significant environmental effects of the proposed project. The EIR identifies ways to avoid or mitigate impacts and evaluates alternatives to the proposed project. As evaluated, the proposed project would have potential impacts to biological resources, hazards, noise, and geological, mostly during construction. With the mitigation measures contained in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, all of these impacts are reduced to less than significant levels. The EIR also evaluated alternatives to the project that would reduce the visual prominence of the water tank. These alternatives included the no-project alternative, a reduced project with a 284,000 gallons of storage tank, partially covering the tank with a soil berm, partially undergrounding the tank by placing it 10 feet below grade, increasing the setback an additional 10 feet from California Way. And then the alternative that I showed you earlier, the hillside location, this places the tank 135 feet from California Way and reduces the visual prominence more than any of the other alternatives. During public comments, we received six comment letters, three verbal comments. All of those comments have been responded to in the response to comments contained in the final EIR, and all commenters expressed their preference for the hillside alternative project. We have cost estimates prepared by a consultant for the engineering department. The proposed project is estimated at 7.5 million. The hillside alternative project is estimated at 8.6 million, and the current CIP budget has a fund balance of a little over 5.7 million. As I indicated, the Planning Commission recommends the city council certify the final EIR, and the Utilities Committee recommends the city council select the hillside alternative project. Staff recommends the council conduct the hearing, adopt the resolution certifying the final EIR, and select the project. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there are clarifying questions at this time, seeing none, we'll go to the public hearing. It's officially open. I do have two speakers cards. Which order? Is there an order you'd like to speak in? Mr. Parnes? Jay Parnes would be first, followed by Mike Mangini.
Honorable members of the Redwood City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jay Parnes. I've lived on California Way for 29 years with my family. We are the Emerald Hills homeowners. Are there any other of you here? Raise your hand, please. Thank you. We are the Emerald Hills homeowners who are directly impacted by the California Way Water Tank and Pump Station Project. The homeowners appreciate this opportunity to provide our comments related to the proposed project. Homeowners have been active in working with Redwood City to find a reasonable alternative to the original proposed plan. We thank Redwood City staff, who are supportive of the hillside alternative as the most desirable of the alternatives proposed in the EIR. We also thank the Planning Commission and Utilities Subcommittee for their support of that alternative. We support added infrastructure for water storage. We thank staff and officials for the many opportunities we have been given to provide our suggestions, and greatly appreciate that our concerns have been considered. We homeowners are in favor of the hillside alternative, the results of a multi-year collaborative effort with the city. The homeowners note that this alternative is superior in meeting the Redwood City general plan The homeowners note that this alternative is superior in meeting the Redwood City general plan goals and policies with respect to design compatibility within neighborhoods. We commend officials for respecting the elements of the Redwood City plan in their decision-making process for the California Way project. Among those elements in the plan with particular applicability to the selection of the Hillside Alternative are the following. One, ensure that change harmonizes with existing development to preserve our historic and neighborhood character. Two, maintain and enhance the beneficial and unique character of the different neighborhoods, corridors, centers, and open spaces that define Redwood City. Three, provide attractive entrance designs at city gateways that welcome visitors and promote memorable characteristics of Redwood City. Four, require that buildings and properties be designed to ensure compatibility within and provide interfaces between neighborhoods, corridors, and centers. Five, require that new projects are integrated as seamlessly as possible into surrounding development, creating extensions of the urban fabric. And six, protect neighborhoods from the encroachment of incompatible activities of land users that may have a negative impact on the residential living environment. Thank you again for your openness and thoughtfulness throughout this project. Moving forward, we wish to continue this neighborhood and city partnership during the building phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mangini?
Honorable members of the Redwood City City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Mangini. I've lived in this area for all of my now 71 years. For much of the past 10 years, I've served as the president of the Emerald Hills Homeowners Association. I now serve on the board as that organization's community and government liaison. The EHHA serves as a neighborhood advocacy group and as such supports the efforts of our California Way residents in seeking to mitigate the visual impact of the water tank project on the area that they immediately live in. We concur with their request to select the compromise Hillside Alternative over the placement of the water tank and urge the council to select this option over option one. On behalf of all the residents of Emerald Hills, I would like to express our appreciation to the council for the way the city departments and staff have reached out to the California Way residents to achieve a compromise solution with regards to placement of the water tank. I have to believe that the process that I have witnessed over the past several years should serve as a model for other-like projects that may be contemplated in the future. Dialogue and compromise are some of the hallmarks of our democracy, and they've been amply represented here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the speakers' cards I have. A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Take council comments. Councilmember G.
Just one brief comment. I think in the staff report, it talked about naturally occurring asbestos in the soil. What that refers to, just for everyone, is serpentine rock, and that's mitigated in the mitigation monitoring plan under, it's called HAZ-2, telling the contractor how to deal with it. So it's there. We know it's there, but we're going to handle it, and we're going to tell the contractor how to make sure the construction occurs safely.
Councilwoman Borgans?
Thank you. I want to start off by saying, this has been a long process alone. I was on the Planning Commission when it actually came before us, and I really appreciate the fact that it all, it involved the whole neighborhood, it involved the whole community, the staff all came together. This could have just happened, but it just shows that our staff and the leaders here actually listened to what the concerns were and came up with a kind of a comparable project, or they collaborated and came up with something that would be good for the neighborhood and good for the community. So to me, this is a win-win because it was collaborative, and I really appreciate that. I read through all the Planning Commission meetings and brought back a lot of memories of those, and they did a stellar job in asking the questions they asked and coming to the conclusions they did. There was so much research done by the Planning Commissioners, especially the last couple of meetings, and it was amazing. So thank you to them, because there was a lot of work that went into getting to this point, and I really appreciate it.
Councilwoman Howard?
Thank you. I did have a question for staff, and that would be, would that be Mr. Ackman? Oh. Well. Let me see. No, we all know that the proposal before us is if we did choose the Hillside Alternative, it would be approximately $1 million more for the budget. And it does mention in the report that the delay replacement of approximately 2,850 feet of existing pipes scheduled for replacement in 17 and 18, 2017, 18, would be deferred. And my question would be, can this distribution system replacement program be deferred for a year? I'm guessing you would not encourage us to choose any alternative other than the first one if you felt there was something in jeopardy that needed to be addressed right away. But I thought that was important to ask you so it could be for the public record. I'm sure you put a great deal of thought into this before you made any additional recommendations, and $1 million is a lot of money. So could you address that for me?
I am.
Thank you. The short answer is yes, it can be delayed. Is it optimal? No, it's not optimal, but we can address it by phasing it over the subsequent years. So that's correct. We want to put forward this alternative as a legitimate alternative if there wasn't a solution.
And I remember at the Utilities Committee, we didn't have all of that information in hand at that time, so I'm so glad you included it in the report, because it's important for people to understand that when we do make changes, something else may be deferred or changed as a result of that. It's not additional money that we have in the budget. So I'm glad it's something that can be deferred and will still provide safety for the residents of Redwood City if, in fact, we do choose that alternative. I did want to say thank you also to the Planning Commission, because having read their report, they really did put a lot of thought and work into listening to the Emerald Hills Homeowners Association. I wanted to thank the Emerald Hills Homeowners Association. This has been a multi-year process. Some of us here know that, and your patience and your willingness to deliberate and collaborate with the city and not just dig your heels in and be stubborn and demand one thing that maybe couldn't happen, to find the alternatives that we needed. That same thanks goes to staff, because you also demonstrated you weren't digging your heels in, saying the way it has to be. You demonstrated your willingness to try to find solutions so that everyone could benefit from having a water source that will provide safety for your community in emergencies and firefighting circumstances, but also be something that complements your neighborhood and complements the architecture in your neighborhood and becomes a benefit and a visual, something that can be visually very accepting in your community. So my thanks to all. It was multi-year, but I think it does serve as an example of how we can do things in the future when we come up against circumstances like this. So thank you.
Councilwoman Mazer?
Thank you. So can I just follow up on Councilmember Howard's question? Sorry. So I don't know if what you were asking was, could this project be delayed? Or were you asking, is because of the additional work with this project, we wouldn't be expending the entire amount in a given year? So would we actually have to delay the replacement of additional pipe? Pipes, I think. That's right. Probably wrong, but anyway.
So it's the second. So every year, we replace a certain amount of our infrastructure underground, and we would have to delay some of that or not do as much of it in the subsequent years and do it over a certain year, you know, take a year or two longer to do the replacement called for in our master plan by placing this first.
But we wouldn't be expending the entire amount in the very first year, in 17, 18, right? Because we will be, as I read this report, unless I'm not understanding it, it's going to take longer to do it. So in general, when you take longer, then you expend the money over a longer period of time. So the additional monies could be in the next fiscal year? Or we're going to build, it's going to all be built in 17, 18?
That's a question I'm going to have to, yeah, turn over to Ramona. Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, like, the actual fiscal impacts in a given year.
So a lot of the money has already been budgeted for this project?
Right, yeah.
So we will be very close to completing the design by the end of 17, 18? So we could actually defer this and go to bid the year after that? So the $1.1 million that would be needed can be actually budgeted the year after, which is 18, 19? It'll still be fine.
Yeah. So then it wouldn't impact the replacement of the other pipe that we were saying couldn't happen because we're putting an additional 1.1 into this?
Well, I mean, it would be at some point.
I mean, I get that it's an aggregate amount.
I'm going to jump in real quick, because I think I have an explanation for this. It won't, so the $1.1 million is money that we spend every year, because we do a certain amount of pipes every year. Little bit, little bit, little bit, little bit. Kind of like the painting, the Golden Gate Bridge. And it may not defer 17, 18, but it will then defer 18, 19. So it'll still push everything into the future. So the end result is, things will get deferred later than they were supposed to have been done at some point. Is that, that's the way the Utilities Committee, this came up with the Utilities Committee, and that's the way it was explained to us, was eventually something is going to get deferred.
That is correct. It just lessens the impact this year.
Right. Yep.
I see still some puzzled looks, so let me add a little different take to it. In public contract law, we have to have the funds available to award a contract and complete. We don't, while the cash may not be spent all at the same time, the funds need to be set aside to be encumbered to award a contract in total. So while the money might be spent over three years, we have to have all that money to award the contract. And so we don't cash flow our contracts, and that's California public contract law.
That's helpful. Thank you. Okay. So just with that, I just wanted to thank the residents for inviting me to come out and see the site. I really apologize that I wasn't able to make it out ahead of time. I just had a very heavy travel schedule in April where I wasn't home at all. So my children didn't see me either. But I really appreciate the attempt to familiarize me with the site and give me a sense of what it looked like. And also, just again, thanks to the Planning Commission for all the work and prep that helped us get to this place.
Great. And Councilwoman Aguirre, who also serves, thank you, as the chair of the Utilities Committee.
First of all, I want to thank the neighbors. I know you've been patient for a long time, way before even I was mayor when we met on this issue. And it's because of your community that projects like this move forward, even when we talked about a deficit and deferring. It's because you were kind and you were persistent, but you weren't bullying, and you were patient, and you stood your ground, and you were looked out for your neighbors and your community. So I think that that's the way we get things done in an amicable way and that we're able to look for ways to make things happen. So I want to thank the homeowners. It's a more beautiful area for where you live, and it works out for all of us, for a much-needed tank that we need, and we need it quick, because we don't know. I mean, right now, we don't have a drought, but when we do, that's an area that needs to be served. And so we've been working on this for a long time and needs to get done. And the homeowners couldn't stop mentioning Lisa. Lisa, you've done a great job working with them. I want to thank you for your connect liaison for the city and staff to connect to the city and to all of us that we can't do. And so also to the staff for really being flexible and working with, finding solutions for this community. It's one of the many communities that we serve. And my colleagues in the Utilities Committee for looking at all the options and making sure that we find the one that best fits the community and also finding ways to make this happen within our budget.
Vice Mayor Bain?
I'd also like to thank our staff and our commission for looking at this so closely, as well as the members of the community. I don't remember if it was Mr. Parnes or Mr. Mangini who said that this is the way the government should work. I can't tell you how many times I heard about this and other projects like this, where I hear members of the community say, "It's a done deal." And I tell every person who says that to me, it is never a done deal until the council votes on it. The neighborhood didn't get everything at once. Likewise, I don't think members of the city got everything that they wanted, but we met in the middle, and we came up with something that everybody can live with. So I want to thank you all for your patience, for being willing to work with us and work through this to a resolution that we can all be somewhat happy with. So thank you very much.
Okay. Make a few comments. It goes without saying, but it hasn't been mentioned, so I'm going to get it on the record that, is the EIR consultant here? Oh, great. If you can come up. I just want to confirm and hear you say a couple of things that I love to hear about EIRs. These will be yes-or-no questions. That this EIR was conducted in accordance with SEQA, and in your opinion, it's the independent study of that project?
Everybody loves EIRs.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sort of.
It was done.
A weird love, but yeah.
Thoroughly, comprehensively, and following SEQA guidelines, particularly as SEQA guidelines evolved over the course of these last several years. We kept revising text and updating sections and making sure it was absolutely current with the current SEQA.
That is important, because I know it's been going on even much longer than that timeline, which is cute, says. Because this was going on when I was on the Planning Commission, too. We were talking about it. And all of the impacts are mitigated to a less-than-significant level?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Couple other comments about this in general. One, the money is not a small issue for me. The neighbors heard me talk about this at the Utilities Committee meeting. And, you know, it's been set up here by many of us at times. The one thing that cities have and governments have is different colors of money. This is not a flippant decision about an extra $1 million out of our operational budget that pays for the men and women who serve Redwood City, that pays for our libraries, that pays for other things. This is money set aside. It's a separate color, can only be used for these types of things. And so when you look at that and you advertise, when you advertise that amount of money out over the life of this project, which is probably, hopefully, 40, 50-plus years, it really begins to make sense and is beneficial for the city. And it is a give-and-take. Infrastructure that benefits the entire city is sometimes a pain to some people. You don't need to ask, or if you want to know, go ask the residents in this room, most of which are probably from this side of Redwood City, who love their sewage to go somewhere. And it goes to a plant in Redwood Shores, and not everybody out there is always super crazy. They live next to it. But that benefits the entire city, and they live with that. And this is the same type of thing. This is a water tank that is absolutely critical to the short-term and long-term needs, and especially the emergency needs of the residents, of all the residents that rely on it in Redwood City, the thousands of people. And yet with that, I do want to thank the neighbors, because this was a constructive process. This wasn't my way or the highway for the neighbors and the neighborhood. This wasn't my way or the highway for the city, the staff, or the city council. This was a way for us to come together and sit down and talk about this, to visit the site. I've visited the site multiple times. I know the area very well. And this was the way that it should have been done. I pushed hard. Some of you that came to the Utilities Committee meeting know that I pushed hard on this issue. And in the end, it's a great solution for all of us. And we did speak to the deferment. There is still money available for emergencies. This defers routine maintenance of our water lines, but doesn't keep us from responding to emergency situations. So it doesn't put, one of the reasons why I'm in favor of this option, it doesn't put the city at great immediate risk, you know, to not being able to repair something in an emergency. So with that, we will need a motion to certify, you want two different motions, probably? Yeah? No?
No, it's just one motion.
Okay. So we can take one motion to both certify the final impact report, the final environmental impact report, and certify, and make the selection of the Hillside Alternative.
So moved.
So I am just making sure. So you have two resolutions that are before you?
Right, yes.
And so you're talking about option two, which is Attachment Two for the alternative?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Is it the maker of the motion intends that?
Yes, that was my intention.
Right. And do I have a second?
Second.
A second? So electronic vote, please.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. It is not, and I'm, and I'm not supposed to allow it, but I.
Now it's a done deal.
Now that you've stopped. With that, I see some young people who are not yet of the age of voting, so if you guys want to slip out, I mean, you can stay for the rest of the meeting, but we're going to go for a while. So, if you want to quietly slip, it doesn't hurt our feelings, I know that people have homework and other things to do, so. With that, we are moving on to Item 8B, which is Amendment and Adoption of Certain Fees for the City's Community Development, Building Engineering and Planning, Fire and Police Departments. There are revised resolutions that were revised, and therefore are different from those that were originally put out, and they are, we do have them on the dais, they were in your red folders, and they are in the public review binder in the back of the room. So, I just want to make sure that we're aware of that, that the resolutions that we will potentially be voting on here in a few minutes are, have been revised, and we do have those. So, with that, I am going to turn it over to the beginning, I believe, of this, to our City Manager Melissa Stevenson Diaz, who will frame the report.
I will, thank you so much. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and if you can actually go to the next slide, please, Melissa. This report follows on a discussion that you had earlier this year in February. And at the time, we described that the city had not updated some of its fees in several years, with the result that, over time, some of our fees are no longer covering the actual cost of providing services. So, last year, we contracted with Matrix Consulting Group and asked them to conduct a study in two phases to update the city's fees to cost recovery levels. In February, you heard the first set of the study results, and that really focused on fees related to development and public safety. And then, later this summer, in June, we will come back to you with fees related to administrative services, city clerk, library parks, and public works. In the February study session, we sought feedback from the city council about the proposed fee schedule and about appropriate rates of cost recovery. And some of the feedback that you gave us at that time expressed concerns about potential impacts on small businesses. You asked us for information about the total fee burden, both processing fees and impact fees as to the cost of development. And you also provided some feedback related to how some of the fees could adversely affect other public policy goals, such as historic preservation. And finally, you directed us to do some extensive public outreach. So, this evening, I'll describe the results of those efforts. First, I'd like to give a shout out to staff in my office in particular, our Deputy City Manager Alex Kojakian and our Economic Development Manager Catherine Ralston, along with Erin Acken, Assistant City Manager for Community Development, because together, they really helped shape a very extensive public outreach process. And that included letters that we sent to contractors and developers who have business licenses with the city. We invited 411 people to give us feedback, we received one response. We also presented in person the proposed fee changes to a number of individuals, to business groups in the city, four different business groups, as well as to two neighborhood associations whom we happened to have meetings scheduled with in the timeframe. And in all of those settings in person, as well as online through social media and our other city channels, we urged people to participate in an online survey in order to provide us with feedback on, on four key policy questions. And we like to say this is, use of this online survey is as a first. It was something that was recommended by our Communications Subcommittee of the Council some time ago, that we try to provide more opportunities for people to provide input besides coming to council meetings and sending, sending us email. I wanted to briefly share the results of that outreach. As I mentioned, we asked four questions. And the first was whether or not commercial property owners should fully reimburse the city for services that are associated with construction on their property. And you'll see of the 256 people who responded, the majority, 67% agreed that that should be the city's policy. Secondly, we asked whether homeowners also should fully reimburse the city for services associated with construction on their property. Here, to a majority, almost smaller majority, 56% agreed with that statement. We then asked about two types of services that perhaps, as part of the city's policy goals, the city would consider something other than a cost recovery approach. And so, question three was whether fees for construction of affordable housing projects should be set at a rate lower than the full cost in order to encourage affordable housing production. And in this case, about half of the responses supported are said that fees for construction of affordable housing should not be lowered, with the remainder 31% thinking that it should, but 20% stating they didn't think it should or should not, having no opinion essentially. And then, the final question was whether fees for childcare facilities should be set at a rate lower than the full cost of recovery. And here, there was not a majority in support of either the statement that they should be set at a lower rate or strongly opposed. So, we had a mix of responses on that question. So, this slide, I realize, is going to be a terrible vision test, and I will actually describe more what it is trying to depict than expect you to be able to understand all the colors and, and what the different bars mean. But one of the questions that was raised at your study session was to get a sense of how would these new development processing fees, when added to impact fees that the city has already charged, how would Redwood City then compare to some other cities? So, the black bar across the middle is the average, and the first column, the first stacked column, are the city's current fees. The second stacked column represent the proposed fees. So, the first thing I would point out is that the proposed fees in this scenario are actually lower than the current fees. And part of that is because, as you saw in the staff report, we found that we had our engineering fees in particular were not set at an appropriate level and needed to be shifted in how they were calculated, because they weren't being credited back to some of the activities that were supporting them. So, so the first thing to note is that our proposed fees are lower than the current fees. Secondly, you'll notice there are a lot of different colors here, and different cities have different colors. And that's because cities make different choices about whether to have, for example, housing impact fees. That's shown in the purple bar in this line. And so, you'll see for some cities, there's, you know, that's a very high component of the total cost, but not all cities have that bar. And then, the third thing that I'll mention is that not all cities have conducted fee studies like this in recent years. And three studies are actually currently doing a study similar to this. And so, we would imagine that their, their fees will change after the results of that study, and a fourth city, Mountain View, will be doing so next year. So, these kinds of comparisons are always a point in time, and there are changes that evolve over the course of time. So, all that is to say, in the staff report, we have four scenarios like this. This one happens to be for a commercial office building, and it shows that our proposed fees are lower than current. They would also make us the third highest of the comparison cities, but we expect those comparisons to change in the very near term. With this chart, I'd like to describe several changes that we have recommended since we came to you in February. So, for the categories, and I'll describe them in a minute, you see a column with the current fee. You see a column with the full cost, and that's what we presented to you in February. And then, the proposed fee on the right. And so, this, these sets of changes are all in response to feedback that we heard from you and from the community. So, as you'll recall, some of the feedback we heard expressed concern about impact on small businesses, on homeowners, and nonprofit agencies. And so, here, we are recommending the elimination of fees on large family childcare centers. Also, elimination of fire inspection fees related to daycare facilities, and a elimination of fees related to film permits for nonprofit agencies. We're also recommending a lower rate than full cost recovery and a lower rate than was discussed in February for Mills Act fees. Those are historic preservation fees, as you know, as well, both the initial permit and the five-year inspection. And then, the last category is a proposed reduction in the signed permit fee, and that is both in response to concern that the new fee could have been too high, would have discouraged compliance. And additionally, our staff, in relooking at the process, found new ways to provide the permit process so that it can be provided in more cheaply than is currently the case. So, these are all changes in response to feedback that you and members of the community gave us. With the recommendations that we have before you this evening, the potential, after realigning fees, would be that the city would receive approximately $2 million more annually than we do today, based on current activity levels. And it is important to note that, you know, these are all fees related to discretionary activity. So, people choose to remodel their homes, or our businesses choose to expand in certain economic cycles. And so, we think that this is meaningful and appropriate. It's also important to note that this level of activity wouldn't necessarily occur indefinitely and into the future. So, with that, we would ask you tonight to hold a public hearing and then to adopt the proposed fee schedules. I would note, as the mayor pointed out, we did have one correction to the resolution and exhibit, because we had an inappropriate reference to how refunds of unused deposits would be handled. So, we've corrected that with what you have before you this evening. From there, we would recommend that staff would update the master fee schedule annually, and that would be based on changes, on average, to employee salaries and benefits. And additionally, that every five years, we'd go through an exercise like this again, where we would look comprehensively at our costs, and similarly, at costs in other communities, in order to propose a new fee schedule. Last, we recommend that you would approve an ordinance and municipal code amendments in order to be consistent with council adoption of these fees. And if all that were to happen this evening, then the fees would be effective on July 22nd, which would be 20 days after the second hearing. With that, I'm happy to answer questions with help from staff.
Okay, I'm going to move real quickly to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, I do have one speaker's card, so let's take that, and then we can do this. So, the public hearing is officially open, I have one speaker's card, that is David, I believe it's Fleishman. Sorry, Mr. Fleishman, thank you.
Good evening, honorable council members and community members. My name is David Fleishman. I'm the Executive Director of the 4CE's of San Mateo County. I'm also the co-chair of the Policy Committee of the Childcare Partnership Council. 4CE's is the county's resource and referral agency. We, among other things, provide over $9 million in subsidies so that low-income folk can complete their education and maintain employment. I'm here tonight to applaud and support the elimination of fees around daycare and family childcare homes in particular. As I believe you know, there is a shortage of childcare in San Mateo County and Redwood City in particular. Currently, that shortage is about 2,500 slots for children zero to four. That's 43% of needed slots not met by 2025. That will go up to 3,334, if nothing else is done, that's half the need that will not be met. So, not only is early childhood education and childcare critical to positive childhood outcomes and critical to leveling the playing field for children in low-income families, it is also a vital part of creating a healthy and sustainable community. With the economic prosperity that we are currently experiencing and the very large amounts of development, childcare is a critical part of the solution to some of the issues that face rapid growth that you are all wrestling with, such as housing affordability, traffic, parking, the ability to maintain an adequate workforce for what is needed in a healthy community. So, please, help support children, families, and healthy thriving communities by eliminating barriers to childcare and daycare, in this case, by eliminating the fees associated with daycare and large family childcare homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my only speaker's card. Have a motion to close the public hearing? A motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye? Okay. Anyone action taken or speaking? Councilwoman Borgans, go ahead.
I just have one clarifying question. First, I want to thank staff for getting back to me with some of my questions. I do have a process question for, and I'm not sure if I can answer that, and that has to do with the fee schedule for when, and it's an inspection fee. So, I just need some clarification on, let's say, we're doing a remodel, and you come out to do the inspection, and it's, it's not quite right. It's, it's ready, they feel, for inspection, but not quite right. If they have to come back out, they charge again for that? I'm just curious. Yeah, time up. I need that. I know I'm done. They're happy with that, too.
I'm going to ask Erin Acken and our Assistant Community.
That's a good question. It would be a situation where they schedule it, we go out there, and they're not actually ready for the inspection, not that they, you know, that we say you have to correct something.
Okay, so you wouldn't charge them again if you had to come back and?
Correct, yeah, so there's, quite frequently, someone calls for an inspection, we come out, and they schedule it in advance, thinking they'll be done. We come out, they're not actually done, so it's those situations.
Okay, fine. And then, I have one other question, and that is when, with our inspectors, say there, Erin, that's okay. With our inspection team, is that in-house, or do we have a contract? Do we contract out for that?
A majority is in-house. During high-volume times, we also use consultant inspectors.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Seaver. First thing I want, just I want to thank staff. There's a lot of work that went to this report, and after the last council meeting, you even did more work, so I want to say thank you. A lot of work went on to that chart. The chart's about cost per square foot, and I think it was very informative to see where we land with the total fees. And it adds up. If you're going to build a house, remodel a house, build anything, between all the different fees, and that eye chart was very difficult, even on close-up, it was very helpful. And when we come back for Phase Two, I'd like to see that chart updated with whatever the council decides on Phase Two, to make sure we're still not the highest, but not the lowest either. You know, I think what your slide, Ms. Diaz, showed about eliminating fees or reducing fees is a great illustration of what we can do as a council to facilitate, encourage, enhance council priorities, whether that be daycare, childcare, historic preservation. We can't, we can't control things, we can't really make things happen, but we can facilitate and encourage by what we do, by demonstrating. We need childcare, we need affordable daycare, and eliminating fees is critical. We want to preserve our older buildings. We want to encourage more Mills Act applications, reducing those fees. Those are things we can do as a council by adopting policies that encourage that, and I think this is a great illustration of what we can do as a council. And I don't know how any more questions or comments, but I'm happy to make the motion if there aren't any, but I'll let, I'll defer.
Councilwoman Howard?
You asked. I, I really appreciated the report, very thorough, and my understanding is how you came to these conclusions were determining the full cost using staff time and materials, but also, what was the impact over the department and citywide in, in direct and indirect costs? I mean, it all adds up, so I better, was better able to understand when something costs something, it's not a matter of, it starts with one person and ends with one person. It's really, it reverberates throughout the city, and I appreciate that you took that into consideration when we're trying to establish true costs of what we're doing. Thank you for comparing us to other cities, that's really beneficial, I find. Overall, I think Redwood City tries to stay moderate with our costs in many respects, and it seems in this area, we have also. So, I would support study, a study being done every five years that would give other communities a chance to update their fees, and I think we'll find we're even more so in the middle and that we're not out of line with what we've suggested tonight. Thirdly, the Mills Act, I was rather surprised to see the cost to do that. Apparently, we have not charged anything in the past, is that correct? And yet, we pay, our cost is over $3,000. So, I'm not sure, you know, it says we're eliminating fees, we have not. We have not charged a fee, apparently, for the Mills Act. And if I'm wrong, please let me know, but that's what I read in the report. And I'm concerned about over $3,000 being spent, as much as I do want to preserve our homes in Redwood City. I think there has to be a fair and reasonable expectation that me as a homeowner who's going to get a tremendous benefit on my taxes should have to bear some of the cost of getting this privilege. And so I would like to get more information on this one, because $500, I'm concerned that we haven't, with no fee, we haven't increased our application significantly. Now, we're bringing up to $500, so it could have the reverse effect, but I'd like to ask you more about that.
Sure. So this is something where, over the last few years, we have seen additional applications, but when it's all said and done, it's only two, three a year. So although it did cost $3,000 per, it really wasn't, on the grand scheme of things, a big hit to our overall cost. So based on council direction, we still wanted someone who is making this decision to make a thoughtful decision, so that, you know, they did have some skin in the game, and they were gonna get a tax benefit. So we felt $500 was a fair amount that they would be providing an application, offsetting a bit of staff time, but at the same time, it reflected previous council direction to stress historic preservation of homes.
Do we have any comparison cities that we could see what they do?
And I don't know that, do.
No, I don't, we don't have that tonight.
Oh, no, I didn't expect it tonight, but it's something we might look at a little more carefully. I certainly want to preserve our homes, but I also don't want to be out of line with what other cities are doing. So maybe other cities aren't charging at all, and then I'd be more comfortable with that decision. I'll vote for this tonight. However, I would like to have more information on other cities, and then when we review again, we might want to look at it and see if that's something that we need to change. Thank you.
Hey, Councilwoman Mazur.
Thank you. Just really quick, first, actually, on the reverse of the Mills Act, I actually wanted to say thank you, because I think that was one of the things that I mentioned when, in the last, when we last looked at these fees, that you could charge a fee such that it negates the impact of the tax credit. And so I appreciate that you thought about it and came back with a thoughtful sort of in-between solution. So I wanted to thank you for that. And then, just to reiterate what my colleagues have said around childcare and what we heard from Mr. Fleishman, that the childcare crisis is big, and it's one of the things we've talked about, and we've talked about some potentially other ways to look at it. But at least if we can make it easier for people to open childcare facilities in Redwood City, I think that we're moving in the right direction. So thank you so much for the work that you did in between the last meeting and now to provide us with some revised suggestions around fees and make them reflect sort of our policy priorities.
Right. Councilwoman Ginni?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution, ending and adopting certain fees for city-community development, fire and police departments, directing city staff to perform a comparative fee study every five years, adopting a cost recovery policy for the city's planning division, rescinding resolutions 14410, 14455, 14609, 14688, 14711, and 15158, and amending resolution 6882.
You have a motion and a second. And is that the only motion necessary in this item? Or do we need to waive the hearing? To waive the first reading, I mean, not the hearing? Bless you.
We also have an ordinance that's being introduced, and so I don't know if that's part of the motion, or if that wants to be taken in the second.
So we also have to waive the first reading, introduce a city code ordinance amendment applicable to community development and police department fees, ordinance 1002. Was that the intent?
That was the intention.
Okay, that was the intent of the motion, see? And is that the intent of the second? Okay, now we can vote electronically. Thank you. And those are the revised resolutions, by the way.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for your work on that. There's a lot of words. Your money's worth reading that one. Okay, on to item 9A, which is a study session, a notice to be made on our five-year capital improvement plan, but a further study, I believe, before Mr. Chinacotla comes up, I believe that our city manager, Melissa Stevenson Diaz, will have a few words.
And this time, it actually is just a few words. But I did particularly want to thank our Public Works Services Director Romano for his work to shepherd what has been a pretty intensive process involving several department heads and many staff, all sitting there, ready to answer the hard questions. But putting together a five-year capital program has really been a tremendous effort, and so this is a major milestone for us tonight, and we look forward to your feedback. And then we do, as you will hear, have more work to do, really, to firm up future plans. I also wanted to just point out, and Romano will speak to this as well, and this relates a little bit to comments Mayor made just a few moments ago, but really, putting together a capital program is an exercise in connecting the dots or matching up the colors of money with the kinds of projects. And as you'll hear, we have a number of different sources that can be used for very particular projects, and then we have needs that far exceed the funding that's available. So it's a testimony to staff's creativity sometimes to match up the timeframes and the restrictions on funding with the project needs we have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Romano.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm really excited to present this five-year CIP. This has been a result of a lot of hard work from a lot of staff and a lot of the department heads and their staff to kind of put together this program for the, at least, has not been done in the recent past. And just as a background, a five-year CIP essentially helps us look at the long-term picture and helps us invest in infrastructure for the long term. And it better aligns our staff resources and our financial resources with our project needs and investment needs. It also helps us strategically seek and pursue grant opportunities and other funding sources as we look at projects that we need for the long term. And it's also best practice. And you got a preview of this in January, so we've gone back, and we've done a lot of work since then. And today's agenda is to provide an update on the anticipated capital needs for the next five years, and also receive feedback from the council about both the current and also on the proposed projects. And then return next fiscal year with a proposed council policy for prioritizing projects and further discussion of new funding for key major projects. And what is new from the last meeting that we came back to you? One is we have also included in the staff report a complete list of the current, which means the existing CIP projects that are active. We've also included additional funding for the Bayfront Canal Project. There is partial funding already that's available, so we've added more funding to it that'll help us complete the project. We've also included estimates for the 10184 interchange project and also for the Wippel Avenue grade separation project. We've also included a new potential project, which is for improving substandard streets in the city for council consideration. And finally, we have refined the project costs for the next fiscal year, which is fiscal year 1718, and aligned the project requests with the anticipated revenue. And then, one last one, which is actually, was a pretty big effort, was to create detailed project descriptions for all the project requests. So we actually have a pretty good detail on the project scope, the cost, the location, and the schedule, and also the funding requirements over a number of years. So we, the council is aware, we have a number of different funding sources. The primary funding source for all CIP projects is the utility user stacks, and the council has always dedicated that money for CIP. And there are other funding sources that have restricted uses. For example, the Water Enterprise Fund can only be used for projects related to water system improvements. Similarly, the Sewer Enterprise Fund can be used only for sewer-related improvements, and so on. I've also included gas tax, even though we don't have any funding that's applicable for construction for next year, because Senate Bill 1, which was recently passed, allocates a lot more funding for gas tax, which can be used for transportation for future years after that. So we actually expect to get more money in the coming years. The proposed five-year CIP totals about $528 million. There's a complete list of all the projects in Attachment 1 of the staff report, but I just wanted to kind of give you a summary here. It's about, a total of about 130 projects, 130 projects, and we've kind of grouped them into different functional areas. As you can see, transportation occupies the biggest need, followed by areas like parks, sewer, water, and stormwater. The proposed fiscal year 201718 CIP, which is for the next year, actually balances the available revenues with the project requests, and that's about $37.8 million and 58 projects. And again, the big areas that are being proposed are in transportation, followed by parks. And in parks, the biggest allocation is for the YMCA project, $5 million, and then followed by sewer and water projects. And I'm just gonna quickly go through some of the key projects for each functional area. For facilities, the project that we'll be looking at doing next year is the exhaust recovery system for five of the five, for the five fires, five fire stations. And for the five-year CIP, the investments include money to improve the city facilities as part of the tenant improvement program. We are in the process of completing a facilities condition assessment study this year, and that will guide us in the future. It will allow us to show us what our different maintenance costs are and what our urgent needs are. In addition to that, we plan to also look at building energy efficiency improvements as part of HVAC upgrades and lighting upgrades. For parking, one of the big projects for 1718 includes digital and wayfinding signage for downtown parking, similar to what you see in the picture out there. And also, as part of the five-year CIP, additional investments in improving the information that we provide to motorists for real-time parking availability. For parks, the largest project that we proposed for 201718 includes the synthetic turf replacement at Marlin and Sandpiper Fields, and also continuing replacements for playground equipment and restrooms in the parks for those that have reached their end of life. For five-year CIP, we have more needs for the YMCA project, which we have shown. For the Redwood Shores Lagoon and Levy area, the two projects basically relate to improvements to the levies and also improvements to the lagoon system. For sewer, our biggest investment always has been improving our sewer pipe infrastructure and our pump stations, so as we replace aging pipe. In addition to that, in the five-year CIP, we also plan to replace a force main, a big force main that's a critical force main in Redwood Shores that takes about 75% of the sewer to Silicon Valley Clean Water. Stormwater, as you know, the biggest project that we're looking at is the Bayfront Canal Improvement Project. And then the five-year CIP projects include a pretty systemic stormwater pump station rehab program, mainly in the pump stations that are in the downtown area, and the Redwood Creek Repair and Rehab Project. Technology, one of the key projects that we have proposed for 1718 is additional funding for our financial management system. We've already budgeted about $1.2 million over the last few years, so this will allow us to add a little bit more funding to it so we can take it towards completion. For the five-year CIP, we have a continued need for improving our technology or replacing our technology infrastructure, like personal computers, servers, and also application support. You'll be glad to know that the AV system here is scheduled to be replaced this July. The RFPs are pretty close to being completed, so I'm sure you're excited about that. Transportation, again, is a very big need for us. The Middlefield Road Improvement Project, it's already about $13 million that we have budgeted. This will basically, again, take it towards completion. We have, every year, council has approved money to improve our roads. Our pavement condition index is at 78, which is pretty close to excellent. And we also have money for the Marine Parkway resurfacing project. For the five-year projects, there are many projects, especially 10184 interchange, there's money mostly from developer contributions for the Bloomquist Road Extension. For water, we continue to, we talked about the California Tank and Pump Station Project, which you approved, the ER, about a few minutes ago. And then, for the five-year CIP, we have, again, more investment in the distribution system replacement, and also pump station and tank repair and rehab. So this one project that we wanted to highlight is the substandard street project. There are many streets in the city that have not been, that don't have curb and gutter sidewalk or drainage facilities that we normally have in other streets. And in order to bring these streets up to current street standards, it would cost approximately $110 million. That's a significant investment and also a very big staff effort. So one of the questions that we would like direction from the council is, is this something that the council would like to see as part of the CIP? And the cost being substantial, who would bear the cost? Typically, this is something that's usually done through an assessment district for that specific street section. In terms of additional funding requirements, so this table actually shows you the funding shortfall after all available revenues over the next five years have been subtracted out, including the UUT. So it's a pretty substantial funding need. It's about $254.6 million. Now, I would caution that this is an unprioritized list. It's basically everything under the kitchen sink that all the departments want. So, but it still shows you kind of a big-picture view of everything that we're looking at. In terms of, given the, given the potential funding need, we also wanted to highlight some of the potential new revenue options. And Attachment 4 of the staff report actually gives you a lot more detail or a matrix of the various kinds of revenue options that are available, some of it, some of the options include increases in the current taxes, like business tax and sales tax. And in some cases, it's include selling geo-bonds, which actually is also connected with a partial tax increase. So we just wanted to kind of highlight these and kind of give you just a glimpse of the different options that may be available. The attachment also shows you the approximate revenue increase that would result with a certain amount of tax increase. And so the next steps would be for the 2017 and 18 CIP to be adopted, once we get input from the, from the council today, with the operating budget in June, and then bring a prioritization methodology to the utilities committee, so the committee can discuss a policy and then adopt a policy or recommend a policy for prioritizing capital projects. I think a formal policy would be very helpful in creating an objective and a transparent mechanism to rate projects and basically select projects based on those criteria. And again, if directed by council, we would also recommend bringing any new funding analysis to first the Finance and Audit Committee, and then maybe back to the staff, back to the full city council. So the council input and direction today that we're seeking is, first of all, the projects that we have proposed, staff has proposed, do they- that we have proposed, staff has proposed, do they reflect the council's strategic priorities? And should the substandard street improvement be included in the CIP? And also provide feedback about funding. Should staff explore dedicated funding for stormwater projects? Unlike sewer and water, stormwater does not have a dedicated enterprise fund, but stormwater is a pretty important element for the city, especially being close to the bay. And so that's something that we may want to explore. Other cities do have a dedicated funding source for stormwater projects. And then also should staff, staff explore any other new revenue options? That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Aguirre?
Thank you, Ms. Chinakotla. That's a pretty extensive list and quite a wish list when you think about 250-some million dollars that we are looking at. And I know that, I heard you say that some of the ways you're going to prioritize are based on our council priorities. I would imagine you also are going to look at what's broken or what could be broken and being proactive in fixing it, especially looking at safety, making sure the cities are safe, making sure that we're compliant with all of our water and sewer and issues. I know that's a big thing in our county. I know CCAG is looking very closely at sewer and the way we're working with that. As far as looking at the cost-share program for the substandard streets, if I lived on that street, of course, I would say that's number-one priority. But I'm thinking, how are we, have we addressed that before? Is this something that's coming up new? Are there more families and children living in those areas? How has this come about? Or is this just been on the back burner because we didn't have the funding for it?
Well, I think from time to time, in certain areas, we always receive questions about, especially when it's, when, when we have flooding, or when we have, I wouldn't say flooding, but when you have rain. Water in these streets doesn't drain as quickly as in other areas. So common questions come from residents in some of these areas saying, you know, can we have the city fix these streets? So it's not something that's, that's basically very prevalent, but we do get-
It's on the list.
It's on the list.
Okay. And as far as other funding sources, have we looked into all of the measures besides the bonds? I mean, are there funds for, from MTC, TAC, CCG for transportation for other? I know that the 101, that what you're looking at, there's going to be funding for that, that amount that you put in there, that $3 million for the Bayfront Canal, is that our piece?
That is our piece.
Considering all the other pieces that would be coming in? Because that's, that's very important.
Yeah. So we are basically seeking about $1.7 million from the other agencies. But that doesn't include, the $3 million doesn't include that piece.
And that includes all the other Measure As, every other resource. We're already looking into organizations and fund water projects in this one and others.
Yes. So there is actually, in the $3.3 million that we are requesting, some of it is actually grant money. So we have actually pursued and got grants for that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mazur?
Thank you. Could we go back to the slide where he was asking for council direction? Thank you. So just on the substandard street project, I guess my response to that is, I think it would need to be a discussion with the various neighborhoods where those streets are. I would not want to just say, yes, go ahead and do it, and yes, we're going to cost-share with the neighborhoods. I think we had an example earlier tonight where it was effective, although it took longer, it resulted in a better solution. And as, as you said, not, it's not like it's this giant outcry in every single neighborhood that they want their streets changed. I don't know. I mean, I wonder if in some cases, they like not have, they like that sort of character of their street, and it drew them to that kind of street. So I guess on that one, I would want some neighborhood feedback before I provided any direction on that particular item. Can you just clarify, did you say that none of the anticipated funds that would come as a result of SB1 were included in the, in the overall estimates of monies coming in?
Sorry, I didn't get that question.
SB1, the transportation bill that just passed at the state level, did you say that we didn't have that included?
For the Senate Bill 1, we will be getting a little bit more money this year.
Right.
But that money is already accounted for because gas tax revenues are also used for operations, and only a portion of it is used for construction. So the additional money that we will be getting this year, or not this year, but for 2017-18, because the bill doesn't go into effect until, I think, end of October.
Right.
So we will be getting some additional money in fiscal year 2017-18, but that money will not be available for capital projects. It's being used for operations.
Oh, okay. I had a couple of other comments. It's hard for me, and I think Councilmember Aguirre said this as well, it's hard for me in reading this long laundry list of projects, as you said, to say, does it reflect council priorities? Because I could say, overall, yes, I think it does. But I think within that, within that list, there were a lot of questions, which I sent to our city manager earlier, that are really specific sort of line-item questions about, I don't know that it really does reflect council priorities. And I'll give you one example, is a study on the expansion of the downtown library that costs $100,000. I haven't, that was sort of like new to me, that we needed to expand the, the library downtown. And so those kinds of things, I think that, I agree, I think that's where the sort of policy direction needs to come into play of, how do we determine? I think you use some good priority-setting strategies in terms of what you're looking at for 2017-18, but then for the rest of the out-years, I do think there needs to be some really clear direction around how do we set priorities and sort of baseline needs as opposed to, that would be cool and interesting if we could do this, is sort of how I'm thinking about it right now. I, I mean, you can sort of, if there's other ways to think about it, that's great, but that's sort of how I've been thinking about it. And then I, and then another question that I asked earlier was about the turf replacement. So we seem to have replaced all of the, almost all of the original turf that we put down, is that right, Chris? Please. No, do not come up there. Just yell from this, yell from your chair.
Good evening. Thank you. So the synthetic turf, it has a life cycle of seven to 10 years. It depends a lot on use. But it is this need to replace. Also, the engineering and products are also updated as well. This was originally, the synthetic turf was conceptualized through the recycled water bond fund in order to meet our goals of water savings. And each field's about a million dollars, excuse me, million gallons of water that we save per field, so that helped meet our goal. Also, with our reductions through attrition and staff, park staff, it's actually, we've been able to maintain at standard levels, but at lower levels because of synthetic turf.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Can I ask you one more question while you're there? As, when you, as you're replacing the turf, I know there have been some changes in how we look at the appropriate types of turf.
Yes.
And so I was just wondering, are you switching from the tire-based turf to-
Yes, yeah. There's a lot of perception, of course, with, with the infill. So synthetic turf itself, the fibers are very similar. It's the infill.
Yeah.
That's of question. So we don't want to even have the perception of a safety risk. So with the Red Morton project, we do not use chrome rubber, our policy moving forward. Also, the request of Senator Jerry Hill, and, and also requests of users, we are not going to be using chrome rubber. So either it's a different type of synthetic that has proven safe, or if it's, now we're looking at even cork, cork fill, which is more organic. We're going to be going that direction.
Thank you. As someone who sits beside those fields on really hot days, I'm very glad to hear that.
Far, do you notice at Red Morton, too, it's cooler, and you don't have that smell?
Yeah, the smell is significant. So thank you. I know that was a very specific question, but it sort of reflects my questions around a lot of the different out-year priorities. So just to, I won't, I won't ask all my, you know, 25 specific questions, just wanted to give a flavor for the kinds of things that I'm thinking about. So thank you very much. And then the last thing, on the dedicated funding and revenue options, I definitely think it's worth exploring. I would expect that different types of revenue are going to be more or less feasible. Having worked on multiple parcel taxes, they're very difficult to pass. And, and potentially, maybe some other revenue sources would be better. But yeah, I would, I would like us to look at potentially dedicated funding for stormwater projects, but other revenue options for our infrastructure overall. So thank you so much for the report and the very comprehensive nature of it.
Councilwoman Borgans?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So the Whipple Road slash interchange, is that?
Sorry, that, that was incorrect. It should be Vipple Avenue, Great Separation.
Great Separation. Thank you for correcting that. Okay, because you had said it in your, your oral report, but it's not what it said. And I was like, okay, that's something different. Okay, thank you. Fine. And then on the Redwood Shores Levy Improvement, are there other available dollars, like from FEMA or state or federal, or, well, God, not federal, sorry?
The San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority will be issuing Measure A dollars. So yeah, that is one source of funding.
We, we are very actively pursuing every possible funding source.
Okay.
So we do have, you know, CCG, you know, anything that's basically, there's Prop 1 funding for stormwater projects, but that's mostly reserved for green infrastructure. But we do look for any available funding source that we can use for these projects.
Great, great. And then when it comes to the cost-sharing, and, and I think Councilmember Mazur related to this, I had a business on Woodside Road for many, many years. I have heard for many, many years that that particular, I'm going to call it south of Woodside Road for better direction, there are many streets over there that have, during the storm season, wanted to have the drains. And then the minute you start talking about the cost of that, that's where the pushback comes. And there are some streets that they really, really like that-
That's true.
-that area, the way it looks without the sidewalk. So that's a conversation that definitely needs to take place. And then, and I appreciate the sentiment that, yes, tonight, we saw a prime example of bringing community together. So I would encourage that, to move forward on that. And I would, I would definitely support exploring new revenue options for everything we do. Anytime we can go out there and get money from any place, I do, and I know you do that. I, I know you, you've got your pole, your, your finger on that pole. So just, you know, keep moving in that direction, because we have an aged infrastructure, and we, we're, we're kind of right there in our maintenance, but you don't want to get behind on it, because then we're, we're really going to see the costs go up. Because it's one thing to do the maintenance, it's another thing when it's an absolute need, when something breaks, that cost skyrockets. So I really appreciate the fact that we're trying to stay ahead of it. So I, this has been very comprehensive. It's very detailed. Thank you.
Councilwoman Howard?
Thank you. That's why I'm so glad we're doing a five-year capital improvement project, because we're taking that longer view so that we can plan on what we do out in multiple years, how we're going to pay for it, who's going to do it. There are just so many more opportunities to be smart when you plan out the way that we're doing now. And thank you for taking on this Herculean effort to, to do this, because I can see this took a great deal of time to you and every staff member who participated. Really appreciate it. I was real pleased to hear there's another use for corks. I've been collecting corks for the Steam Fest. All of my restaurant friends have been giving me bags of corks.
Vice Mayor Bane and I, we were just talking about that to the side. I think the council probably could do the whole field. So, Chris, we're in for one of those fields. We'll just grind up our corks.
I suppose if you need them-
Special machine or something like that.
Grind them up. But if you need them, we will come. We will provide the corks for you. We do have our sources. So I was glad to hear that. Corks are wonderful. If they go to screw caps, we're in trouble. I, I did want to say that, in, going to the slide, council input and direction, I believe that it, the count, the projects do reflect most of it in order of what we're looking for, immediate issues. We don't want to have too much deferred maintenance, what needs to be done, maybe new things that have come up that really need to be done, just because maybe we hadn't thought of it before, but it's become necessary to think about it. The substandard street improvement project, if we were to include it in the CIP, I, I agree with Councilmember Mazur that we should first find out, is there a desire by the neighborhood that's maybe discussed? And also, assessment district, I think that has to happen. We just don't have enough money to go around and do everything we need to do. We obviously can see that. And we have used the assessment district successfully in the past, and I suggest that we continue that practice for the time being. Until we have some surplus, we can talk about, I think there has to be a buy-in in order to do the kind of, bringing up to the standard of other, other Redwood City streets that we would like to do if they so desire. We may be surprised there may not be a voice out there asking for that. I'm just not sure at this point. I did want to ask about the cab building. Thinking long-term, we have discussed in the past, the cab building is under, the space is underutilized, in my opinion, and I know it's come up before. When I was on Park and Rec Commission, we talked about it, that in the future, the cab could be so much more, whether it be for additional parking for the park itself, or space and parking. But I don't want to see us spending too much money on short-term improvements if what we really want to think about is a long-term improvement for the Community Activity Building on Roosevelt. So I just wanted to put that out there. I see Chris smiling. So I know it's been discussed before. So I, it's an older building. Eventually, it's going to need a lot of money. And so let's think strategically on that one before we make a final decision. I really would like to see the utility committee discuss a policy or a formula for, we're not going to do the prioritizing, I wouldn't suggest that, but a formula that we could present to council to make it easier to prioritize projects. I think that would be something that would be worth the time of the utilities committee to do. And the finance and audit committee discuss fundraising options so that we wouldn't have a whole menu of things that maybe some would rise to the top and others would not, based on their discussions. Because I think that's going to be a challenge, trying to choose fundraising, funding sources. As Councilmember Mazur said, there are certain things that are easier to do than others and more palatable for the community. So we need to have more lengthy discussion that probably can't be handled at a council meeting, per se, and could be done by one of our subcommittees. Yes, let's explore dedicated fund, I think we should explore dedicated funding for stormwater projects. How we do that may be combination of the utility committee and the funding and audit committee. But that's important. And if we start spreading the money around, I think certain things that really have to be done can get diluted, and that could be a danger. And new revenue options, I mentioned. So I think I've answered the questions on that page. Thank you.
Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Chinakotla, first thing, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Councilmember G will now sing for you.
No, we want to get over with the meeting as quickly as possible. So, but anyway, best and happy new year, or happy birthday. Number one, thank you for the great effort. Doing a five-year CIP from scratch is not an easy task. And hopefully, as this rolls forward, it becomes easier and easier as we strategically plan what our infrastructure and facility needs are and the funding that goes with it. But to get to this point from a lot of different spreadsheets, so- But to get to this point from a lot of different spreadsheets, so tremendous amount of effort on your part, and then staff's effort across the city departments, so everyone that's here, everyone that's not here, thank you. And, and as mentioned earlier, I, I'm okay with the current year, but I believe when the facility condition assessment is completed, that will inform the out-of-year priorities. Right now, I think we can look at year one, year two, but year three, four, and five will be a little fuzzier until the FCA comes into play. Also, want to thank you for adding the Whipple Avenue Grade Crossing, Grade Separation Project, it is time for that. I know that's been on the council DAS before, many years ago, but as electrification and more trains are wanted on the, on the corridor, other cities are working hard to get in line for grade separation funding. We need to do our part, and Whipple Avenue is deserving of that, probably the easier one of the many in our city to do, so at least get it in here to start studying what it would take. I think for everyone that has paid attention, you've heard the council say different colors of money, and the CIP program's a great illustration of the many colors of money. What we can do with it, what we can't do with it, I lost track of counting how many different colors, there probably should have been a chart like the one in the previous presentation, there's at least 10 different colors of money in here, that we can't spend water money on stormwater, we can't spend street money on sewer, that's just the way it is, that we have to look very carefully at how we combine the colors of money to make things work into the CIP program. Real quick question, there's a project in here, and probably Mr. Beth knows this one, about spending some money on the Armory Building, have we gotten a lease extension on that? I don't want to spend money on a building that we're going to turn back to the state next year. I mean, it's important, it's the ADA improvements, but I, I don't, the state should be making that investment.
So, a couple of levels in answer to the question. So, as part of the, the use agreement for that, in lieu of rent, wherever paying fees, they asked us, and we're required to, do improvements around the building, that included painting, repairing the windows, ADA access, and then also improving inside with some carpeting and flooring and plumbing upgrades, and then on the outside, it was the parking lot improvements. So, what you see there is reflective of the costs for that. We are already talking about extensions, we're in year two of three, plus the two-one year extensions, and even talking about going beyond that for further extensions, and they've even said, hey, you know, we recognize the recreational value of the community, and so, we want to talk further with use, even if we get back in the building. So, we actually have a conversation, which is an amazing achievement in itself, before, because they have been so silent and just not wanting to talk to us, so I'm hopeful.
Very good. Thank you for that. That's great, especially if we can get it longer and extended. With regard to council input and direction, the first bullet point reminds me of when a couple of us joined the council back in 2009, 2010, and I still find the guide, guidepost still true, that the five-year CIP, given that we don't have enough money, needs to focus on public safety, infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, and legal compliance. I mean, those, those are timeless, in terms of the list of things we have to do, whether it be stormwater because of regulation, whether it's infrastructure being sewer pipes, or water, or streets, or public safety, and making sure our community is safe. So, I still use those in almost everything I look at, at here at the DAS, and they, like I said, they're just timeless. So, when I look at that, there's one project that I've said from the DAS a couple times for the couple, last couple of years, that I would like to ask for consideration, is that in some of our older neighborhoods, somewhat like the substandard streets, our street lighting is pretty dismal. They're dark, and they don't, definitely don't meet current lighting standards, and so perhaps a Phase One is an assessment of those older neighborhoods, like Stanbach Heller, like Centennial, and there's probably another couple dozen others, where you get a bright spot, and then darkness, and then more light, because the foot candles just aren't there, they just don't meet any contemporary standard for street design, or maybe even your street.
My street has no streetlight.
So, maybe there's, there needs to be an assessment of our neighborhood's street lighting in the older neighborhoods, to see what we're missing, see what it takes, and then the council can prioritize that. I, I concur with the need, maybe in next year, once the FCA comes in, for one of our committees to come up with a policy or guideline for prioritization of projects. I, I think that's an important thing to do. And with regard to funding and revenue options, I'm not ready yet until we get to that point of prioritizing and looking downstream strategically. The five-year CIP is a living document, every year passes, another year gets added on. But I think before we even ask our voters, our businesses to pay more, we have to have a clear message of, if we're going to ask them for money, where it's going to be spent, and that we've exhausted all other revenue opportunities, whether it be regional measures, potentially RM3, CCAG, TA, wherever it may be, we've got to exhaust all those, and that includes potentially community partners. District Acton gave a presentation at our last meeting about partnership Redwood City, which is a phenomenal, I mean, it's, it's done more than I ever thought it would do. And, and we shouldn't be too quick to dismiss partners that want, in our community, who want to help. We owe at least a look before we say no, or before we say yes, and we need to, to look at things like that. Likewise, if there are things that don't fit council priorities, we need to look to the community to help us. For example, I've heard comments about, you know, what can we do to improve Wi-Fi downtown? That doesn't really fit in the priorities of public safety, public infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, but maybe because some of our technology partners in the community, maybe we hold a hackathon, or maybe we'll look to them to partner with us, to come up with an answer for improving Wi-Fi, so we don't have to do it ourselves. I've been told, all we have to do is give them pizza and beer, and they'll figure it out, it might take a little bit more than that, but we need to look at community partners before we ask our community to pay more in parcel taxes, business taxes, sales tax, and really exhaust everything before we go back to them, because there's, there's going to be so many other tax measures and revenue measures on the ballot in the next two years. I want to stay focused on what we can do within our community to support our community first.
Vice Mayor Bain?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there have been a lot of really good comments by, by the council here, that, that have made me think of a few other things I, I might want to add to that. So, a few questions first, the detailed project descriptions are, are fantastic, and my question is, are those available on the website, or will they soon be available for the public to, to look at those?
Yeah, that's the goal, and we're, it's still a work in progress, there's a few things that we still want to add to it, but there's, yes, the goal is to have all these available on the website for the public to be able to see. And there's also a lot of information already on the website, on the current CIP projects. The Community Development Department has actually put the project information, the ones that are currently in progress, on the city GIS, so you can actually see all the projects on a map.
Great, I, I, yeah, I, I think the descriptions are very helpful. What is the process for amending this plan going forward? So, first of all, I want to say, to your first question, yes, I think this very, reflects our priorities very, very well, and I'm very comfortable with, with this package, I think it's a great package, and, you know, I think that it's, I think the five-year process is, is a very good process. I actually think this is one of those moments that we will look back on, the way that our mayor looks back on when the council established a reserve policy, and we're going to go, that five-year planning process was a great step. So, I think that's great, but I want to make sure that we do have some degree of flexibility in the future, if a project falls off, needs change, what's the process for amending this?
But this is basically a living document, so every year, we basically take this document and revise it, so as, then we add one more year, and then we look at the projects again, and just kind of go through the same process. And then, based on the priorities at that time, there will be certain projects that may be excluded, or there may be some, some projects that may be included. But the only part that's going to be adopted is the first years, every year, and then the next four years would be a planning document, but they will reflect the council priorities at that time.
Thank you. That, so that does lead into my second thought, in terms of the substandard street program. I do think that, long-term, we as a city need to do something about substandard streets. That doesn't mean necessarily putting in the $110 million, I think all of us choked a little bit when you said that, but, but I think there's, there are a couple of things that we should think about, so first of all, to Councilmember Mazer's point, we've got to include the neighborhood organizations in this, so we've, as a council, we've been working very hard this year to reinvigorate those organizations, including the online committee on Next Door, and, and find ways to bring them into the process. I want to bring them into that discussion early on, including them, letting them know how prohibitively expensive it is to make these types of improvements. And I also think we could use the survey tool as part of those processes, when we're ready to ask specific questions. So, for example, there could be choices between this improvement in your neighborhood, or that improvement in your neighborhood. All that said, I'd like us to explore less expensive options. I know, I'm, I'm guessing, I should say, that what, because I didn't see this in project description, what you're talking about is the traditional way of installing stormwater drains and sidewalks and other improvements. I, I'd like to see if there are any alternative methods of improving drainage in those neighborhoods, including permeable pavers, other things that we might be able to do as maybe interim solutions that would improve some parts of the city. And I'm thinking particularly of, there are some neighborhoods, kind of in the middle of the city, where we got calls from people who had pools of water, I wouldn't go so far as to call it flooding, but they were blocking handicapped entrances to the corner of those streets. Could we do something there, tearing out the, the concrete and putting permeable pavers that would help get the water into the ground? So, those are some, some short-term solutions that I think we should explore there. Dedicated funding source, I mean, I, I think, you know, Councilmember G made some very insightful comments there, in terms of the different things that, that we are asking, and that our partner organizations are asking the public to fund, so I, I'd want to tread cautiously with that. Again, I think we can probably engage neighborhood associations and use survey tools to find a little bit more how the public's feeling about that, as well as compare stormwater projects to other projects that could potentially benefit from that dedicated funding sources also. So, I would say, the key word for me here is explore, yes, but tread carefully on that. So, and I mean, the same thing with new revenue options, I put those two in the, in the same, same bucket, but I, I do want to say, also, that, that comment about streetlights, that's, that's a good suggestion as well, I'd really like to see us take a look at that, too. So, I, overall, I think it's a fantastic package, I look forward to seeing how this is going to roll out, and help build up funds to do some of the major, major things in this community, that the, the community will really feel and appreciate down the road. So, thank you.
Councilwoman G.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. My apologies, council, I forgot to make one comment. You know, given the magnitude of the five-year CIP and, and the difference in revenue over that period of time, it is highly probable, probable that we will start to be accumulating deferred maintenance. So, I would just ask that the Finance Committee work with Ms. Stevenson Diaz, and see how we can track and report that on a regular basis, like when the five-year CIP comes, so that we know where we are sitting in terms of our assets versus deferred maintenance, because there may be a point in time where we may not have choices, but we want to be informed when we get to that point and look strategically. I mean, deferred maintenance being that if it's past its useful life, and we're still using it, we're kind of rolling the dice, five, 10, 15, 20, 50 years, and so, we need to, this council and other councils after us need to be informed by looking at that data. So, I think you'll be able to track that, once you have the five-year CIP in place.
And also, the, the prioritization policy, once that is in place, then you'll be able to very clearly see which are the projects that are being funded, and where you are in terms of those needed projects.
Thank you for the hard work, this has been a long time coming, and I think it's only the beginning point. I'd actually begin in, in the future, and I, I agree wholeheartedly with Vice Mayor Bain. I've worked long enough in the, in the facilities business to know that, until you get to this point, which is only the beginning, because then you can start to look at asset management 20, 30 years out, and begin to do a better job of investing in the future for things, but I think this is, this is a good start, it's a great start, actually, and I think this will be a milestone in the long-term, you know, in the things that ultimately frustrate people, and that is forgotten crumbling infrastructure. We've seen that in cities around us, we've seen that in, in, including in the hetch-hatchy water system, that's exactly what happened. Really, these plans, what's important for me is, it's the importance of knowing. It never strikes me, it, it always strikes me funny that people that don't do this, organizations that don't do this, think somehow, if they don't know about it, nothing's going to fall apart. And the reality is, all it does is become a surprise at that point, and not something that you planned for, so I appreciate that. Real quick, just as a side note, before I say something about the questions, one could have seen some of the numbers earlier in this, and seen relatively, well, it's a lot of money, but, but in terms of parking, about not necessarily funding an entire parking garage for that, and I wanted it to be briefly mentioned about the opportunity we may have in, in a collaborative process to acquire parking without building a parking garage, by buying into the county's project, so can you just briefly mention that?
Correct, so the county is contemplating a garage, right, where there's a surface lot right now of veterans in Middlefield, right next to the current jury parking garage. We've had preliminary discussions over the last six, 12 months about using some of our Inlufi money, we'll have about $8 million in Inlufi money, using about three-quarters of that, so that we could buy somewhere between 150 and 200 spaces within that garage, that we could then sell permits for commuters.
So, essentially, getting 150 to 200-spot garage, and somebody else gets to do the work, we just buy into it?
Correct, and we, we use developers' money in order to, to purchase the spaces.
Perfect, all right, I just want to put that out there, because I know it's out there, and I think when somebody looks at this, the, the snapshot could be, where's, where's the money for parking? And the reality is, we have a parking Inlufi, and there are plans in the works to use that to get some, a couple hundred spots potentially.
Correct.
Okay, back to the thing, so the questions, real quick. Yes, I think it reflects the council's strategic priorities now, and the, the next question about should, I, I think, I think everything should be included like that, the key isn't whether it's included or not, the key to me is the next step, and that is the, a robust study of, of the prioritization. And, and I believe that, that this is where we could use the Utilities Committee to bring back a weighted scoring criteria, that would have, you know, whether it's 10 things, or a dozen things, or five things, but, you know, certainly, public safety, whether or not it saves you money in the long run, like the LED project, whether or not it improves the quality of life in neighborhoods, all those things, and then you can begin to wait and score things about, about the projects, and it become very clear, given, given a process and a scoring system. So, one of the things that I would look for, potentially, is the Utilities Committee to bring back to the council for its approval, a weighted scoring criteria that could then the staff could go back and apply to the projects. I think when you have something like that, it, it stands the test of time, that as priorities change, I mean, the, the priorities of safety and the quality of life in neighborhoods, and, and saving money down the road, so that things don't cost twice as much because we didn't take care of them, those kinds of things, I think, stand the test of time. In terms of dedicated funding for stormwater projects, I, I go back and forth on this, but one of the things that I'm continuing to see, and we're, and we're continuing to see at Silicon Valley Clean Water, is the issue related to the treatment of, and the deal, the handling of stormwater. And so, I think we do need to keep apprised of that, because I do think in the future, it could drive us towards a dedicated funding for stormwater, like we have for sewer, like we have for domestic water usage and those types of things. Terms of, of exploring new revenue options, I think we've got to explore everything. I think, I've heard some great ideas, but the reality is, we, no fault of anybody's, but as with most organizations, and you can see the list, we will run behind, and that's okay, but we need to look at creative options to do that. So, those are the comments I have, I look forward to this coming back in the future, and thank you for all your hard work. So, with that, we are moving towards the end of our meeting. We, we do, as a council, have a closed session to still go to, just, that doesn't mean anybody can't say anything, but I'm just reminding people that, when the gavel drops tonight, it's not over for us. So, are there, are there, that's, are there reports, Councilwoman Borgans?
I'm sorry, I got to say this real fast. I want to give a shout-out to Melissa Stevenson Diaz for the wonderful day of recognizing our employees. It was incredible, I actually stopped in just real briefly, so I could see what was going on. It was incredible, it was probably one of the best received, and I have heard nothing but, you know, every- It was probably one of the best received, and I have heard nothing but, you know, everyone's going, wow. So thank you. Thank you to your staff, everyone that worked very hard on putting this together. It really was very well received, also in the community when they heard about it. So thank you for that. And then I actually had the opportunity of attending the Java with Jerry, Senator Jerry Hill, and I presented him with one of our books, a couple of our books, so he could have them for his staff. It was incredibly attended. It was at Cyclissimo? Did I say that right? Okay. It was packed. It was packed with residents who had incredible questions all over the place. It was, it was about healthcare, it was about transportation, it was about education, it was about bills that he had in the Senate, or bills that didn't go anywhere, what are we going to do now? It was just an amazing amount of conversation, and he handled it masterfully. I mean, there was a little bit of tension that was going on in the room. I was getting a little concerned, and he, his staff said, oh, this is mild. This is a really good crowd. So Redwood City did themselves really proud that day, but for those that did attend that, we have a very smart constituency here in Redwood City, because they were asking some amazing questions. And then two things real quick. I serve on the airport roundtable, which all of you said is very, very boring. It's gotten very, very interesting, have to tell you. We now have a legislative committee, and we're working on our annual work plan. I attended both of those. That was six hours of meetings in one day. So it's really, yes, I was looking at them, like, really? But it's getting very interesting. Maybe it's just because I'm desperate for it, I don't know, but it was, it's really good. It's very well-run, and we're getting places with airport noise, so thank you.
Hey. Great. Tomorrow night, is there a list of restaurants behind me? Because my screen went blank. Oh, there it is. Okay, so everybody, take a look at this real quick, where are you going to eat tomorrow night? I got a couple picked out.
In Redwood City, not.
In Red, yes, in Redwood City.
Each of us are doing two restaurants.
Yeah, that's right. And if you eat at one of those tomorrow night, it, 10% of the proceeds will go to Meals on Wheels, because it is dine-out night tomorrow night. So dine-out night, you can see that Tuesday, May 9th, and so you can eat it in one of those places.
You can eat there all day, actually. It's like, pompous.
I think you're right. I think you're right. Yeah, it just, my notes say, it says dine-out night. So you could go out for breakfast as well, to some of the places. Go to a pizza place for breakfast if you'd like, so. With that, I'm going to make sure that was up there. Thank you for doing that. I was making a couple of notes of where I might eat. And then our city manager oral report, please.
Just to be very brief, as you know, we try to use a lot of different ways of communicating with our residents. It's comparatively fast and easy to send out messages on social media and on electronic newsletters. But three times a year, we do actually invest in a print newsletter, and I hope it hasn't already been recycled in some folks' homes, kind of missed with some of the other flyers. But our first one for this year actually came out just last week and was mailed, so I hope that our residents will check that out. A lot of great information in there.
City attorney report from closed session?
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We are adjourned to closed session upstairs in 2B in a couple of minutes. Otherwise, we're adjourned to May 22nd. Thank you.
See y'all in a few hours.
All around.
Yeah, right. It was very good.
Labor, labor stuff.
Sorry.
Yeah.